First thing we need to do is pass an ERA. Economic Revitalization Area.
Rick Hall, can you hear us?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
We got the Plaski County Resolution 25, 2025-16. To make this an ERA. That what we need to do first, maybe?
Uh, I mean, that's, we can go through it first, but so what you have in front of you is, as you said, 2025-16, which is a confirmatory resolution establishing an economic realization area and granting assessed value deduction, more commonly known as tax abatement for this project. So in addition to the five pages of the resolution proper, you have several exhibits. Exhibits A and B should be familiar to you because they are duplicates from the preliminary resolution. They are a parcel map and a parcel list of all of the parcels that are be for which ERA designation is being requested. Exhibit C is the Form SB1UD, the Statement of Benefits for Utility Distributable Personal Property. And that actually outlines the various expectations, the promises, the estimated promises that the developer is making, the assessed value, the estimated total of jobs and their cumulative salaries. Information on the second page about what qualifies for deduction, the length of the ERA, which is not the same as the length of the abatement, and so on. Then you have page three of that exhibit C just is the table showing the annual deduction value. Exhibit D, the last document in the first part of the packet, is a copy of Plaski County Resolution 2021-06. Ken, you and Mike, I believe, are the only, no, Tim, you were already here, and you three were here when this was adopted. Twenty-one, 2021-06 is a sort of a procedures regarding tax abatement. Basically, it gives the council the right to exercise clawback if the developer fails to meet the expectations set forth in this. And there is a separate page that the developer has to sign assenting to these provisions before the entirety of the abatement resolution can be considered done. And then the second part of your packet, which is actually divided into two sections, is the economic development agreement between the county and the developer and the various exhibits that go along with it. Exhibit A being the proposed economic development payment schedule. B, another, yet another copy of those maps and parcel list. C, another copy of the SB1. And then D, the guarantee agreement, which does not get executed until 90 days prior to construction. This went out to you all on Wednesday evening after I got it back. There have been a couple of very minor adjustments to it from that version, nothing substantial. There were a couple of things that Doral had asked to eliminate that Rick Hall, our attorney from Barnes and Thornburg, who is on the line, suggested we retain for additional protections for the county, so those are reflected in here. I know there is a lot of information in front of you, but do you have any questions, any of you, before I just keep rambling incoherently? As proposed, and I will kind of go over just the key elements that I put in that email body when I sent it out on Wednesday. As proposed, the abatement is 20 years at 100%. As you may remember, effectively, unless the law has changed yet again, there are only five years of actual tax payments owed that are being abated because of the depreciation schedule that these panels, these panels and ancillary equipment follow. But the 20-year period gives us more flexibility on negotiating payments while giving the developer protection in the event that the law does change and that floor might be reinstated after year five. So if we did only a five-year agreement, we would not have as many payments and they might end up paying taxes instead of economic development payments. The 30% floor, as I just sort of implied, that was eliminated by SB1. They were not willing to agree to having language retaining the 30% floor for after year 20. So after year 20, they won't pay economic development payments or personal property taxes. They will still be paying real property taxes. But they did agree to language that gives us the ability to enforce the 30% floor during the 20-year abatement period. If, for instance, they default, then we have that as a backup in the language. The payments as proposed, which is at the top of the second part of the second part, Exhibit A to the Agreement for Economic Development, 20 years of $3.36 million per year for a total of $67.2 million over 20 years. Assuming a 10% discount rate that has a net present value of $28.6 million, which is even, adjusts for net present value, still more than they would pay in five years of personal property taxes. Any questions?
What is the first thing I start?
I believe the expected year is 2030. It goes along with once they are operational. Can any of you from Doral confirm or correct your expectation on that matter?
My understanding is that could be the, if we say the operational in November of '29 or December of '29, which is anticipated, then that would be taxed. It would be the next year. The expectation of it is the end of 2020. Right. It's different.
The other point I will make in talking about the 30% floor, I noted that even without it after year 20, they will still be paying taxes on the land reassessment. As of right now, commercial utility land in the northern part of Indiana is assessed at $13,700. The DLGF just came up with updated base valuations for commercial utility about two and a half weeks ago. And unless the legislature steps in, and Mr. Hall has suggested he thinks that renewable companies will seek to lobby the legislature to bring that back down, but they, as of right now, it is now somewhere about $18,700 per acre by the time this project is live. So ground that is currently being taxed on a value in the ballpark of 21 or 2200 an acre will be taxed in somewhere between 13 and 19,000 an acre, depending on where that all falls after the General Assembly session. So I have not attempted the calculations based on that higher number, but per the Baker-Tilly report, based on the 13,700 number, that is an increase of approximately $61 million in assessed value across Richgrove, Franklin, Jefferson, and Monroe Townships, which means that even with a tax abatement in place, just because of the significant increase in land assessment, the tax rate in each of those townships will drop relative to the pre-construction rate. Most, three of the four townships, it is about 5% to 6% drop. It's only about 3% or 4%, I think, for Jefferson Township. So those four townships, because they will actually have the property, the reclassified land in them, would see 3% to 7% drop in their property tax rates. And that does not account for any downward effect on tax rates that the other projects in the Q might have. And so the rest of the county, Baker-Tilly didn't dive into that, but we'll see a marginal decrease in taxes as well because in addition to various components of that $60 million being applied to the assessments of the four respective townships, the entire $60 million will be applied to the county's assessed value. Now, the county is substantially higher, so it is obviously not as impactful in parts of the county that aren't served by some of these overlapping tax units. So for instance, Tippicanoo Township and Beaver Township probably benefit the least from this project because Tippicanoo is part of its own library district and part of the Culver Community Schools. So it's not benefiting from the the decrease in tax rate that Plaski County Public Library System or Eastern Plaski would see. Likewise, I think there is a little bit in Jefferson that is in West Central's district. I think it's mostly in Eastern Plaski. So all of the townships in the West Central School District will benefit a hair, but not substantially. Other questions about any of this? Throwing a lot of information at you here.
So paying for 20 years, is there a reason why we can't use like paying over 10 years of investment?
I have no problem. My understanding from the discussion at the last meeting was that we wanted payments spread out rather than front-loaded. I, I would, I like that idea. I think the more we get upfront, the better. But, and I mean, really, because it's just an exhibit, you know, we, if the council approves this, we could approve that with that, and I could just change the spreadsheet and it would be super quick. I mean, that's whether or not a majority of the council wants to pursue that and the developer is allowed to. But I, I am a fan. Whether, and whether we would want it all in 10 years or front-loaded with a little bit so that we have a consistent flow? I mean, that's, that's an option too. Brad, did you have a question to ask too?
We also, Mayor here, talking about not having, start paying once it's operational, have to start paying once they break ground.
We, that's also a possibility. We did that with this current project. The one that, that, that is, to my knowledge, not typically a standard process. The reason we did that specifically in that situation was that I saw if the council so choose an opportunity to front-load some of those payments in case we wanted to allocate any of the revenue from this project to the Justice Center Debt Service. To this point, the county hasn't chosen to do that. But that, that was a little bit of an anomaly. Not to say we couldn't have a second anomaly if they're amenable to it, but that was a very specific set of circumstances that led to my asking them to do that in the first project.
When is projected to start the? By the end of 2026. No, sorry, sorry, construction is to begin next year, to begin next year.
I think, so I think as Rick worded the actual agreement, it has to be started by the end of 2026. But in the SB1 they submitted, they actually projected the spring of next year. So they've got like a eight or nine-month window in which they have to begin, or we pursue reality. And I will remind you all that our attorney from Barnes is on the line. So if any of you have any questions for him or for Jacob, please feel free to direct if there's something I'm not appropriate one to answer.
And for those of you that have questions about the timeline, that's reflected on page two. Yes, you know, since Mr. Hall is on the, on lines or anything that he would like to point out or, you know, just to send work as to, you know, how this agreement, taking your flights, you know, aligning with other agreements and, you know, you know, whether it's personal legal opinion and negotiating these agreements, is this a reasonable and expectable agreement compared to others ever in the period?
Rick, did you hear Ken?
Yeah, I did hear that. I, I have negotiated agreements like this all over the state for the last 10 years. And I think that this is a, is a good, solid agreement. I think it's, you know, significant money to the county. Going to be all the more important is we have Senate Bill One and its impact on your general budget. And so I think the payment amounts are strong and the rest of the terms of the agreement are fair and have the appropriate protections for the county.
All right, thank you. You feel the same way about this period?
Yes, yeah, spent time with Mr. Hall and reviewed this as well as the additions that were added to it. And I feel comfortable with it. It's really, from the legal standpoint, I think it's fine. It's your decision on what you're going to pass or not is a different sort of a matter.
Right, exactly. Our legal counsel and the negotiating team. What's made it, yeah. I'm sure the agreement that's on the one that's presently being built was so loaded late into the schedule that I think it's wrong to not have the first five years, it needs to be front-loaded. If you're going to do this, it's got to be front-loaded. Because I think too many things could go wrong. And we I think the first five years are very good.
Anybody have anything else? We need to, you know, entertain a motion to pass an ERA.
Mike, if you don't mind before, Tim, do you have a request for what that front-loading in the first five years should?
Yeah, when you talked at that session, it was like 3.3 million starting right out of the chute. Whereas if I'm right, this one's
This one's 3.3 across.
It costs, but that's not right up front because it
Yeah, it's 3.36 million every year is what's current.
Starting from when it's
Starting from
2030.
2030.
2030, yeah. And I'd like to see that start earlier myself.
Yeah.
So they break ground.
Do you guys have, they're in the room, specific ask for how much of a front-loaded payment before the actual 20-year period looks like? I mean, right now, it's, I think it's 3.5 or 350,000 here, which is one quarter of the baseline annual payment on there.
Well, I think by year five, you should have half to 67 million. That way, you're guaranteed it. If you start making, investing money, the county can start investing the money. Otherwise, if we only receive 3.3 every year, we're going to pretty much just be gone. And then when it's year 20, it's 21, it's, we're going to be like crap. Or so used to spending 3.3 on, heaven forbid, knows what. So as soon as we can get a huge chunk of money, I mean, I'd like to see $30 million very quickly invested and then start using the money to invest in things in the county. And we're setting up ourselves up for success. I'm sure a lot of people here do investments, make your money work for you. Done with that. One more question for the gentleman.
I mean, by year five, you guys had half to 67 up, correct?
I'm sorry?
By year five, you have $34,000 taken. 34 million.
We would have to reevaluate the net present value of that. Our expression in the executive session is clear that it is a regular annual payment for 20 years, allowing the county to recruit three times the value of what we were paying property tax, property bid.
I just don't see how it's accounting best into 20 years, 3.3.
The value is 67.2 million dollars.
Yeah, but I want to see a lot quicker so we can put the bank, start investing that money.
Do you want that 3.32 every year?
You know how much more you can get investment out? 30 million versus, you know how much more investment you can get out of 30 million versus 3 million?
Yeah, that's part of our financial, we have to evaluate that as well.
It's a week.
I agree.
Well, 5.3, entertain motions or what are you guys going to do?
So is this the same, same phrasing that we, on, on March? Is it the same one?
Yes.
So I thought we voted down in March.
And then you revoted it in July.
No, we just voted to take, let them do their paperwork.
No, you, yeah, and so in March and in July, you had the same basic resolution in front of you, a preliminary resolution, which starts the process, convenes the EDC, leads to this point. So in July, you approved what you shot down in March. So what we're doing tonight as a continuation of what you did at your October meeting, I believe, what you were doing tonight and did in October is what you would have done in April or May if you had approved in March what you ended up approving in July. So it just restarted the process.
I don't understand how you can restart it.
Because the council agreed to rehear it and approved the process all over again.
So the only thing I understand at hand is somebody had a conflict of interest bowed out. And then magically, somebody else takes that position. That is for this, and here we are again. I mean, that seems very tricky. I mean, I remember sitting at that meeting in their county garage and I said, "By Sheila, you remember you said, didn't you, Sheila?" You leaned over to me and said, "If you don't vote yes for this, abatement, good luck ever getting a 11."
I never said that.
You did? I wish I had it recorded. You did. And I was just, I was beside myself. I was like, you know, I've lived here my whole life, this county, my family's, our business is here. And it's like, this, this is the kind of corruption we have in this county. It just floors me that people in the council are like this. And then somebody bows out and we replace them with somebody else. It's sad in this system.
So that kind of brings up another subject about that disclosure. How many council members have other agreements with solar? You made agreements or you received money or funds or you're going to receive funds later on? I just, I got that question. I had people ask me that. Just, I mean, I don't, I don't have
I don't say I do. I know I was approached by a store, definitely moved the dirt for them. I said, "I can't. The money's good, but I can't."
So can everybody say that they don't have a conflict of interest with, with Manasol? Have you taken anyone or you want to get anybody removed or? This is a big question in our county right now. So I think we all want to complain and this, this needs to be brought up. We're going to have probably some litigation later.
Well, and I, I would point out to you that the issue of conflict of interest is reflected in the criminal code in that if an dollars, I believe it's a level six felony, which opens someone to criminal liability, normally you would have a conflict disclosure that's filed. Now, in theory, somebody could not fill that out accurately, and I'm not suggesting people always do, but then it's incumbent upon that person to do it honestly. And if they don't, they could be open to criminal prosecution. And I won't speak for any prosecutor's offices, whether they would file that, it's not up to me. But that's, that's criminal penalty, not a civil one in this context.
So I, I don't have, I don't have any, any, any conflict or disclosure. And I know AJ doesn't, AJ turned work down. Jeff did, I mean, you not received any money or?
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I guess I'm not, unless somebody's being accused of something and, you know, they're going to prosecutor, file, have charges filed or I'm not sure where this state really reflects what's in front of us, you know, this is not, this is not trial, this is not, you know, a term, and we don't handle that matter. So, I mean, we have a resolution in front of us. And, you know, the council's job by statute is to manage the finances of the county. We don't, we don't bring solar in, we don't pour any other kind of business. We don't, you know, not Dr. RC to encourage businesses to come to our county. The council's responsibility is to manage the finances in this specific event. Our responsibility has nothing to do with the project and the our, our, our simple fact of trying to negotiate the best terms of the agreement to bring revenue into the county that's going to benefit the county. And that's, the agreement's what's in the forest, and I think that's what we're here today to discuss and to try and decide whether we want to accept it as presented, whether we want to talk about front-loading it. I think that's the, the point of this meeting, not to decide whether there's somebody with some criminal law or right. That is for another call. That would be mine.
Based on some of the comments from this end of the table, and knowing that Doral is concerned about what any changes towards front-loading might do to the present value, I've got a, say, a I've got a, say, counter proposal to present if Doral is willing to entertain it. Uh, so similarly to the Mammoth project, two, like we'll call them years A and B outside of the twenty year scale based on groundbreaking versus actual operations at seven hundred thirty five thousand, five hundred dollars a year for a total of one point four seven five in those two pre-operational years. Four front loaded years, five million dollars apiece for twenty million after that. So after two pre, uh, two construction years and four operational years, we're at just shy of twenty one point five million. And then for the remaining sixteen years, two and a, two and a half million for a forty million dollar total. It brings down the total amount from sixty seven to just under sixty one point five, but increases our net present value and gives us more money to invest upfront.
Can you say that again?
So there'll be two construction period payments. It may be four, like we're doing right now, but two years of partial payments as we have under the current projects agreement at seven thirty five, five hundred for a total of one point four seven five million before operations. The first four years of operations, so the first four years of the twenty year tax abatement period would be front loaded, five million dollars per year for a total of twenty million over those four years. So we're not quite at the fifty percent AJ was going for, but we're now at about a third of the total. And then for the sixteen remaining years of the abatement period, annual payments of two point five million or forty million over the period for a grand total of sixty one million, four hundred seventy five thousand dollars. Two point five per year. Sixty one, four seventy five, triple zero.
So it's six million short to get extra money at the beginning.
Yes.
Is that what you guys are looking for?
I'm sure there ain't more than any payment to be any less. Although I can't be concerned.
I am, I'm just knowing what they're, and I'm trying to find middle ground that they will agree to. And if they're, if they're concerned about the NPV, this brings it back down closer to where they started. Council doesn't like it, we go back to the drawing board. That's just something I've put together that on the fly that tries to find a little bit of compromise between developers' position and council's desire to see more upfront. Like literally just on the fly. Yes.
So we don't even know if it's okay with them?
Oh, Kevin, not a set in agreement. I haven't run that. I mean, I could pull up a calculator.
That's the just, okay, I have that. This is why I didn't have executive session to prove clear. This is just direction we're given. Quick bit given in that executive session with significant on the, any good second, I don't know. I don't understand why we'll change the terms.
I've got a lot of respect about me and that pressure.
I didn't understand that. They understand this. Nobody said, he said he wanted, they had it lower than that for two minutes. So who said he wanted about three million or whatever it is now? And we said, yeah, we did. It's the first time now. So we're talking all the time. I don't blame you. But you know, if you don't agree to the bet, I don't care anyway. But I do want to make this vote tonight about fires and buildings. This is our third or fourth meeting on this and we agree on something and now we'll change it. We didn't agree. We talked, we was talking, or we was talking.
I just hate to leave the six million dollars, man, electricity is going to be here twenty years. Hate to leave twenty six million for the county. But you guys. But maybe you can turn it over. Put that section on back there.
I can do that. As soon as I answer Kevin's question with the proposal I've just made, yes. Kevin, ten percent discount rate assumption. Something you guys were working with. That actually brings it down a hair from the twenty seven where you were at.
I'm sorry, maybe if you said it.
So I'm sorry, that's not very big. So as proposed, um, two years of little more than three, of just under three quarters of a million, four years at five million and sixteen years at two point five actually brings the NPV down to twenty five something. So actually that is swung the pendulum a little too far. All right, back into twenty seven million, which is about what the net present value was. Sorry, one second. Want to get all my ducks in a row before I answer that. All right, now I'm up, I'm back up to sixty four, five with a net present value of twenty seven, four. If we do three quarters of a million instead of seven, two years at seven hundred fifty thousand, four years at five million, seven hundred fifty thousand, and then two and a half for the remaining. So our net present value is back in the twenty seven million ballpark where we started. And we're only a few thousand, few millions short of the total sixty mil, seven million over twenty years.
What was the final number?
Net present value or cash? Uh, cash was sixty four million, five hundred and four thousand is where I'm at right now. Sixty seven or sixty four million, five hundred and four thousand grand total with a net present value of twenty seven million, four hundred five thousand, seven hundred and sixty two dollars. And that means that after two construction period years and for the first four years of the project, we're at twenty four point five million. We end up with close to what we had expected. We get a lot more of it upfront and the NPV is still in the range of expectations Doral came to the table with.
I'm going to say if I, if, you know, I didn't make the level of NPV, I'm assuming that that will start that at least happen. So I'm going to agree with that.
Question, do you have to have a tax payment make this project work? I guess we, we voted no, will the project continue?
The, I think it's an important part of the project, important part of us contributing to the community. If they send this protocol tied to the EDA, the EDA gives three times of property tax would have been there on the bottom of the project. It's hard for me to understand how I would go to think that this was a negative and that's going to be that. Not to say anything, but another desire of the possible fact that it's not the time to give. People don't believe that's correct. I have not heard of it. My point is that more financial sales, why an official county can have a security plus, it's an important part of the plan.
But I'm going to forget those. Like White County does. They have a fund like this and then they also do taxes on top of it.
You're getting, you're getting new taxes on top of it. I mean, I think we did this before the executive. This is, this is a lot of time.
Okay, so if the abatement doesn't go through the project work.
I'm not saying.
So I, I, one thing I will point out. Setting aside concerns people have about the abatement or about solar per se, we know that the current Mammoth project has shown some serious issues with road safety. And Chris can probably attest to countless hours spent out there. Earlier this year, the commissioners approved a substantial increase to their, to the solar permit or to solar fee, yeah, in, within the county's fee schedule. In addition to like base fee, like a fifteen mil, fifteen, fifteen thousand dollar base fee and the third party services fee, which we do have in place now, there is a one thousand dollar per megawatt fee. This project is anticipated to have a nine hundred and forty five megawatt nameplate generating capacity. So if the project goes forward, whether or not an abatement is required, if it goes forward, in addition to these payments, they are going to be cutting a check to the county for nine hundred and forty five thousand dollars just for one component of the permit fee. That doesn't include the money that I will invoice them for to, for the county to pay VS or whomever we might choose for this project for their monitoring services. It doesn't include the fifteen thousand dollar base application fee. Doesn't include the ten thousand dollar agreement fee, which is a fee that is included for like the time I spend on this EDA and Gary spends on the road use agreement or Carla helps with that, that Jenny Keller spends on this drain. I was opposed to such a massive influence. And my reason for objecting is that the state code says that permit fees should be reasonable fees tied to the cost of administration of the project. What I see as a way, and yeah, everybody does it, even if it's tough to make that argument that they're actually spending nine hundred and forty five thousand dollars administering the pro, measuring the project from the county's perspective. What I am seeing as a justification for that fee on this project that would also help us with the other projects is that county could take, the council could take a large chunk of that nine hundred and forty five thousand dollars, maybe all of it, and work with the sheriff's office to figure out how we could hire more deputies, whether it's part time, overtime, or new. And I know from conversations with Chris, it gets a little bit tough, um, hiring new deputies if there's no expectation that they'll have a job once this funding rolls out. But one way or another, we would have the funding to hire deputies. And yes, their permit that's paying for them is coming from this project. But we're going to have other project construction periods overlapping with this. We would have the flexibility to have additional deputies on day shift if the council so choose and sheriff could make it work logistically to enforce, to better cover the construction areas for these projects. That's just something that it can be as sort of a bonus if this project goes forward, that it, it will help, it will create additional traffic. But it will create a funding source to hire more deputies to monitor the traffic it creates as well as the other projects.
I, I do have a question for my colleague. I guess I'm saying things that what was requested of Doral was to, would they be interested in front loading a project, would they be interested in, uh, you know, paying a substantial part of the project upfront. Nathan went out and ran his numbers as he does his magic with numbers and came back with a proposal. Doral has agreed to that proposal. But the folks that asked for that proposal, Matt had it on the table. I would have thought they would put a motion on to take what they just requested from the customer that's here. I'm a little surprised that I haven't heard a motion to accept a proposal. Maybe that's not what you really want.
Yeah, I mean, I've not seen any hard, hard numbers on paper, but this is just a discussion. We talked, so do we need it on paper?
It'll get trans, it'll get entered into as soon as I have access to the printer. And the signed copy will have the updated payments in them.
You're damn right it will. I would invite you, you have twelve minutes to get that through yourself, so.
We need to do a ERA first.
It, it's all one. You pass the resolution and all of this is incorporated into it. All of the exhibits, including the EDA, are incorporated by the language in the resolution into the ERA. ERA slash abatement resolution.
Thank you. Should do it separate.
There's nothing to do separate. It is part of it. Like that's how our attorney structure, if you, yes, if you adopt the resolution, you adopt the EDA in whatever form it has come to take.
Nathan, maybe point them to the section where it says the EDA.
He said, point to the section where it's at.
Thank you. So on the the last, the second to last page of the resolution itself, so the fourth page in your packet where signature lines start, you will see resolution number eleven. This confirmatory resolution shall be subject to the terms of the agreement for economic development attached hereto as exhibit E and incorporated herein by this reference. So the maps, the SB one, the, uh, resolution twenty twenty one dash zero six about clawback provisions. And then the EDA with all of its separate sub-exhibits are all part of the resolution. So if you vote the resolution up, you vote the EDA up. If you vote the resolution down, you vote the EDA down.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution with the changed numbers that my colleagues have asked for. As per Doral's agreement here to front load this and Nathan's numbers that he's worked. That's my motion.
Now the motion is second, the past the resolution with the new work numbers, which Nathan just presented. Pass the resolution with the new work numbers, which Nathan just presented. Very discussion. So for the discussion, we'll vote, all those in favor, so the five saying aye. All those opposed, same time. How many opposed?
Looks like three down here.
Three of them that wanted it changed.
So we just lost.
Motion carries. We lost three million dollars.
Yeah, I will, as soon as you adjourned, I will. I'll have stuff for you all to sign here and just.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.